We welcome you tonight to the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We call our meeting to order. We note that we have six of the council members here. Councilman Steve Vincent is excused. With that, we'll go to our opening ceremony. We'll turn to Councilmember Don Christianson.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have special recognitions. We note whenever we have like a scout troop visiting us and for some reason it seems like there is one here. And so hopefully you're prepared, your troop, if you would have one of these scouts come up and introduce your troop by troop number while you're here and maybe the schools that you're attending.
We are Scout Troop 646 and we're here for the Communication Mayor Badge.
And your schools, say, for example. Obviously various ones, but what schools do you attend?
Uh, Westlake, Hunter.
Okay. Well, welcome here tonight. Good to have you with us.
Thank you.
And so enjoy the evening. You're all in the same troop, I take it? Or no? Oh, we got another one.
I am Benjamin Lind. I'm from Troop 9646 and I'm here for the citizenship and the community.
And your school?
Cypress.
Cypress, very well. Very good. Welcome. And I believe that's all our scouts. I think the rest of you are here for other things. So we'll go on to the next item on our agenda, which are minutes. March 15th, we need a motion on the minutes.
May I have a minute for approval of the minutes of March 15th?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Are they correct as they are? Looks like so. Then that being the case, all in favor of approving the minutes of March 15th, please say aye. Aye. In opposed, say no. Motion passed unanimously, the minutes are approved. Next, we go to some awards and ceremonies that we're doing tonight. We have three of those. We'll start with our Employee of the Month. Isaiya Awelua or something like that. And so Councilman Bueller, let's see. There he is.
Thank you. Yes, the Employee of the Month, Isaiya Awelua.
Thank you.
You just stand there while we recognize you for a minute, okay? The nomination's short and sweet, but impressive nonetheless. And it was submitted by Lori Jensen. On Sunday, January 24th, 2016, my neighbor had fallen in her driveway just as the snowplow was driving by. Isaiya went above and beyond to stop and help her. He was trying to get her up when a man walking his dog also stopped to help. They were able to get her up as she could not put any weight on her legs. Isaiya lifted her up and carried her into her home. And so thank you for that good service and representation of the city.
Good luck.
And I might add that any of you who have seen the West Valley City float, he's the best float driver you will find.
All right. Next, we have a presentation of the American Graduate Champion Certificate to Margaret Peterson. I believe there are representatives here from the Utah American Graduate Initiative.
Mayor, I apologize. I don't know who's giving the award, but evidently you're not here.
Oh, is that right?
I've never met the people and...
Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Powell, will you help us out?
Sure. I'll apologize too. And I certainly don't want to leave Margaret hanging back there. She's the one being recognized. And so although she's a great leader and manager of people, she shouldn't be on the spot to run her own recognition. And I also apologize if whoever is supposed to be doing their recognition isn't here and we haven't grabbed them. But it's Ms. Haley Johnson is who I was told would be here to make them recognition. So we may have had some scheduling conflict or something. I don't know.
She said she'd be here, but you know, people get lost. Freeways are busy. Or accidents happen, those kinds of things. I would just like to thank the Board of Directors who are here though. They came all the way from their busy lives to be here. My son Christopher, he's not on the board, but he's a great supporter. Karen Seo, Salt Lake Credit Union, she's our treasurer. Diana Bevan, Salt Lake Community College is on the board. Let's see. Kevin Conde is our new board member representing the city. Oh, Joe, Joe Bramble, principal at Farnsworth Elementary. Anyway, and thank you.
Mr. Powell, maybe...
I left out the chairman of our board, Mr. Steve Bueller. You're always here, always on the ball and with the great jokes.
We can give a little bit more time for that lady to come.
Sure. Nothing like coming to shake your hand. You have nothing to do but shake hands. Thank you, Jen. This is really embarrassing.
If you'll maybe be patient for a moment, here comes somebody rushing in.
I'm Haley, yeah.
Maybe possible not.
Start over.
Okay. Haley, would you mind coming up and introducing yourself here?
I don't go to West Valley enough. Missed a couple exits to get here. It was crazy. Okay. My name is Haley Johansson. I'm from Utah Education Network. Utah Education Network works in conjunction with American Graduate, which is a nationwide initiative funded by the Corporation for Public Broadcasting. This initiative uses local broadcast stations as a platform to boost education locally. We not only try to focus on the places we can improve, but we also try to focus on our current successes. The way that we do that is through our champion strand. Anyone can nominate anyone for helping students reach education milestones. We want to build a community of champions, promote their hard work, and encourage others to be champions as well. Margaret Kate Peterson was nominated by a community member for reaching out to students before and after the school bell rings. As the Director of Communication Education Partnership of West Valley City, Utah, she helps create after-school programs for students and their families with a college and career readiness component. Through these programs, students and parents learn about the importance of college, gain on-campus experiences, and learn from other successful students and families. Margaret advises students on their path to success to work hard, listen to other students and teachers, and not to be afraid to try new experiences and accept challenges. I would like to invite Margaret up. Oh, there you are. Margaret, thank you for your significant work. On behalf of Utah, you are making a difference. Here is your certificate as an American Graduate Champion. Thank you very much. Thank you so much.
Would you like to come up and join me?
Oh, yeah.
Where are you working now? On the road crew or what?
Can I give my speech now, Mayor?
Sure.
Just quick, a quick update on what we're doing. West Valley and our partners have contributed substantial contributions to community education partnerships and to our kids. We have 6,000 kids that we're providing and helping have after-school opportunities, increasing their tutoring and their reading, their math skills, and their enrichment opportunities. West Valley contributes 35,000 annually in meeting space. Our cultural center contributes thousands of dollars in art, culture, awareness events, and tickets to facilities around the valley. We have eight and a half million dollars over 12 years that have been provided by partners, various business and local partners throughout the state. Our granters, we've received 6.7 million dollars from the Utah Office of Education. Over about eight years, we have received 250,000 from Criminal and Judicial Justice Center and 450,000 from the Department of Workforce Services. We partner with University of Utah KUED Family Outreach Program, the School of Medicine, Salt Lake Community College, Slick Summer Science Program, Chess Tournament, and College Preparation Events. Grant District, another one of our big partners, provides free space for our 23 programs valued at 4.7 million dollars over 14 years. We partner with principals, teachers, secretaries, United Ways, Salt Lake County Youth Services, Rocky Mountain Power, Walmart, Questar Foundations, and numerous other partners. So it's a business of community partners that makes us succeed. And we appreciate all that you do and appreciate Steve for being chair. He's outstanding. And thank you, Wayne, for your support over the years. You know, we don't have anyone else providing after-school programs in West Valley City. And we have kids who are in need, serious need, of help improving their reading and math skills. And this is the only opportunity that most schools have for after-school enrichment. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Okay. Well, just in the nick of time, all taken care of. We go on next to the presentation of Parks Department Awards from the Utah Recreation and Parks Association. And I assume someone is here for that? Ah, yes, sir.
It's great to be here. Actually, there was supposed to be someone else here with me and he hasn't shown. So I'm glad I'm here and I'll be glad to take care of these things. My name is Kim Olson. I am the Executive Director of the Utah Recreation and Parks Association. We are a statewide membership association for parks and recreation professionals. We have over 1,000 members. We represent about 78 different agencies throughout the state. Most of the park and recreation municipal agencies, the counties, about four or five of the universities, Utah State Parks, a number of others. So we represent most of the state as, you know, in the park and recreation field. We're very passionate about what we do. We believe that parks and recreation is one of the most important things in our lives. We all have to work. We all have to have our homes. We all have to be safe so we can recreate in our free time and go have fun. I mean, that's what we like to do. Anyway, as an association, we provide training, opportunity for networking, different workshops and things. Our major event each year, we have a convention where we, you know, bring everybody together. We usually have 300 to 400 delegates, over 100 vendors. It's a, we think it's a pretty good event. But one of the things that we do like to do, as most associations, we like to honor some of our members that have shown excellence in the field and really excelled in what they do. And at our convention, we give out usually just barely over 20 different awards. Some of those award categories have two or three in each category, but there's about 20 people we recognize. Well, people and departments and facilities all wrap up in there. But the first award we'd like to present tonight is to one of your local... Oh, here, I got these out of order. One of your local merchants here in town that has been a great support to West Valley Parks and Recreation. I know their company motto is that they get involved in the town and in the community, but they don't just talk the talk, they really walk the walk. And we'd like to present Chick-fil-A and Paul Howard, the award for Outstanding Vendor Sponsor of the Year. You know, he gives so much to the city, treats, food, Easter... Didn't you give him like Easter baskets and things?
Whatever your Easter baskets.
All kinds of stuff. And that's, you know, so many other communities would kill to have someone great like this in their community. You guys are lucky to have them. So sit yourself, Theodore. So let's give another hand. Now, there are a number of people in your department here that are very active in our state association. Let me, but let me go ahead and give out, there's two special awards that you received this year. First of all, your department received the award for Outstanding Adaptive Programming. They have a great program here at your fitness center where they have things for kids to do, no matter what their age is, no matter what their ability is. There's a lot of areas where children with disabilities are just turned away. We have nothing for you, sorry. If you can't do what we have, then you can't do it. But here, their motto seems to be, "If you can't do what we have, then we'll make something that you can do." And so we'd like to present the Outstanding Adaptive Program, presented to West Valley City Family Fitness Center, Adaptive Programming. So if someone who's going to come up and receive that. Congratulations. You've had a great program. You're some good people here. Why don't you just stay up here and then we'll get group pictures of everybody. Would that be okay?
Whatever you say.
Then the next person, we give out just a couple of professional awards each year to the outstanding professionals in a couple of different categories. We have a lot of great professionals in our field, but for her continued support of our association, she is a past president. She is doing some other things that I'll tell you about in just a minute. But, you know, our awards for our, that we give out, are selected by a committee of past presidents of our association. Those that have been present before, so they have a lot of experience. They've been around. Almost all of them are directors in their own city or department. And they can, they recognize excellence in someone that has really stepped up the plate and made a big difference. And we'd like to present the outstanding professional in management to Nancy Day, West Valley City. Now, let me go over just a few more and I'll call them up as we go. These are the actual awards. But like I said, here in West Valley City, they're very active in our state association. Okay. Nancy was just appointed, we started two years ago, a Leadership Academy that we try and take young professionals, put them through a year-long program where they really get a good training, good leadership. They travel all over the state, see various programs. Nancy was just appointed as the chair of the committee that's in charge of that. We appreciate her on that. And you have two people that just graduated from that program, Carly Kent and Candace Mayweather. Are they here? Stand up. We're going to get everybody's picture here in a minute. Then we also have, at the conference, we give out a couple of scholarships for professionals. And Parker Chapel was able to get that, the Great Western Park and Playground Professional Scholarship, to help him continue his leadership training at different conferences around. I know we always don't have enough for our training. So Parker? Oh, you're on there. That's right. Okay. Two other, well, yeah, two other people. We also, on our Board of Directors, is Clint Burnham is our aquatics representative and our Region Two representative is Jamie Young. We're divided into four regions in the state. And this region here in the Salt Lake area is our Region Two. So we'd like to recognize you guys. Come on up. So, you know, I've been in the field for a long time. You have a great department. I know you support them really well and I know they appreciate that. Your Family Fitness Center is one of the nicest facilities in the state and a lot of people are jealous that they have that so nice. But we really appreciate your department and we want to congratulate you and your support on the fabulous staff you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Shake hands with all these people too, Mayor.
Get this first?
Yeah.
I'm going to do this real quick. Hey, going this way? Stop. You have to know each other like I know you. Look how far you've come. Sorry. Just trying to get the tone. Okay. All right. Kevin, we only have three minutes.
And as is traditional in our council meetings, when you're done with that part of the program, you're on, they leave. So, not unusual, that's pretty standard. Well, next we have on our agenda, our comment period, up to five minutes per person. And we have three who are signed up tonight. So we'll begin with Mr. Nichols. Welcome back.
I'll say Nichols, 53, 29 West, 4100 South. And the kids are riding their bikes, dragging another down the road today on skateboards. What are we going to do? Mr. Powell? Balls in your hands.
Mr. Nichols, actually our rules require that you address all your comments to me.
Oh, okay. Well, what's going to be the part, what's going to take care of? They got motorcycles running up and down the sidewalks. These guys are dragging one another up and down the road. The cars are still going 70, 80 miles an hour. No police protection. What's going to be the situation? Stay off the road?
It's your time, not mine.
Well, I'm asking you a question. I can answer.
My turn will come later, sir. So you go ahead.
Well, that's all, that's, okay. Just know what's coming on. I've never seen an officer the last two days in the morning. So, whatsoever. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Darren Patton. Well, yes, you can both come up. Are you going to take your, do we do that? Two people talk once? I guess there's no problem with that.
We live on the same street, so he lives right down the road from me. And the problem is, we're having these, I live on 31, I live on 4270 South. The problem is speed bumps. We need some speed bumps in that road. Because people come from 3600 West and they're going all the way down, they're going all the way down to 2700 West and they're racing through, they're racing to the neighborhood. And we've had petitions down this. And you can't keep putting Band-Aids on this problem because somebody's going to get hurt. You know, I'm sure you heard about that three-year-old boy getting killed in Zaver two days ago. Hit by a car. And we need some speed bumps on that road. And I don't know why you can't put temporary speed bumps on that road. Because, I mean, I hate to say this, but I've seen them in Taylorville City. Temporary speed bumps. You can't keep putting, you can't keep policing that neighborhood because that don't work. That's a scare tactic there. I've seen people go 50 miles an hour through that neighborhood before. And somebody's going to get hurt. Whether, where they're going to piss off some neighbor and somebody's going to throw a rock through the window or something. Because they have no, they have no regards for the neighbors in that neighborhood. And Ken, he lives down there on, where do you live? King Arthur Drive. And they run right through that, they run right through that stop sign. Hell, I'm sure, I'm sure if they put police officers, if they hide them somewhere in that street, I'm sure they could get their quarter for that month and tickets. We've been, we've been trying this for three years now. Petitions. They've had that fake radar sign saying how fast they're going. That don't work. You can't keep putting Band-Aids on this problem.
on the, the gentleman's question and discussion there, so. And I'm having a hard time remembering if we've had this discussion in this city before, but I think we may have. The gentleman mentioned it's been three years.
I looked online, his name's strong there.
The one gentleman's face looks pretty familiar, so it could be possible we've had that discussion before. And the first question I was gonna ask is, do we, or have we conducted the normal process, which we do when these questions come forward? So, for example, the council knows that when a citizen brings forward a concern or question or complaint about this, we actually do go through a multi-step process to decide if there's something, or whether it's appropriate to do something in these cases. I'm assuming that's all been done, I'm not sure, so I'll go back and check that out, but that normally would include things like speed studies, the petition that the gentleman mentioned. We sometimes will do other measures besides speed humps or bumps, and they are two different things from a construction standpoint. We've done the solar-powered speed indicators, not, they're not supposed to be like fake radar in the sense that they would scare people into thinking they're getting tickets or anything, they're just supposed to let them know, hey, this is what speed limit is in this neighborhood on this street, could you please comply with that? Then beyond that, we have in the past put speed humps in on roads that are appropriate for that, after those studies have been done, where the public works goes in and decides, doesn't decide, they look at a study and say, this is what the average speed is, does that fall within engineering standards or not? And then the decision is made from a recommendation standpoint, the council will say, yes, we should, or no, we shouldn't do that. If that recommendation is made to do that, then it does become a question of funding. And as the one gentleman mentioned, sometimes it is sort of sad that we have that decision that we have to make, but it's also important to remember that every project, every street, every police officer, everything that is done with the city is funded by taxpayer, taxpayer dollars in the first place, and the council is in the unenviable position sometimes to have to decide where those dollars go. So, just a comment on the one gentleman's question about what is the neighborhood's share in the cost of doing that? That's not something that we have contemplated in these particular instances, speed humps or, or traffic control, but that is a program that we do in other areas, like for example, if a resident wanted to have sidewalk or gutter replaced in front of their home, we'll do a sharing program with that. So, the reason I bring that up is, it's not something that we wouldn't consider, it's just something we haven't done before. Usually, those speed humps, by the time you decide that they are appropriate, go through the speed studies, you decide that, yes, we do wanna do that, they're in the neighborhood, and I know this sounds kind of crazy, but they're in the neighborhood of around 15,000-ish a piece to put those in. So, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's not an insignificant amount of money either by the time you've gone out, you've engineered it, you've put them in place. Usually, they have to be concrete, not asphalt, because asphalt comes apart, and you go through that process. So, I'm not really directly saying yes or no, or answering the gentleman's question, I'm just giving you that, that context of what you might consider as... And did I, I did actually have one quick reminder, which I could just ahead of, if that's okay, which was, this is on King Arthur Drive, or is it 4270?
4270.
Winchester.
Okay.
It'd be 4270.
All right, just for my memory, thank you.
Maybe 100% worse than it was 10 years ago, you guys, sorry. I didn't think of that before I was up there.
4270s, east to west, King Arthur's, north to south.
Got it, okay. Okay. Did I complete yours? Okay, then to the council, anyone wanna make comments besides me? Because I'm, I'm interested, both Mr. Nichols, who spoke just before you gentlemen, and you as well, have raised an issue, and it relates, relates to the traffic and to speeding. And I will tell you that I have walked through many neighborhoods in the city, talked to a lot of people, in every neighborhood, in every one of them, there's a speeding problem. Well, who speeds? Well, just about everybody, unfortunately. Certainly, we sometimes notice younger drivers more, but the reality is that a lot of people drive fast. You can put in stop signs, some studies show that that, if you put a stop sign in, it increases the speed that people go, because they try and make up for the time that they're stopped. It's a real challenging thing to find a solution that actually makes a difference. And I've even seen where in some cases, people later ask that they be taken out, when, for example, a traffic calming or speed bump is put in place. There are not easy answers when you have a majority of your people who are willing to speed, and they don't slow down. And they do it by schools, they do it everywhere. Our police force, even if we took every single officer and put them on traffic control, and ignored all the other issues, accidents and the like, we still wouldn't have enough to make much of a dent in that. What we find, I think, and if I'm wrong, Mr. Pyle, correct me, but we can put in some type of item, or if we have a police officer, it slows them down for a while, but then, once the officer's gone, it just picks back up. How do we change human nature? Don't have an answer for that. It's a real challenge, and I've seen in different parts of the city where we've put in the bumps, I've seen where we've put in items where you have to drive around, kind of a little, you know, not a traffic circle, but what do they call it?
Chain.
Yeah. So that, you know, you're forced to slow down to drive through it. And they do there, but then they immediately pick up again and take off. So, what do we do? How do we solve that? And we haven't, and the reason it still exists is because I don't think anyone has solved the problem in any city. I think if you went to any city, you're gonna find many of the same challenges. And some of the streets that they speed on are not long streets, and it's even been a problem in some cul-de-sacs in circles, because they speed down there and then screech to a stop. Maybe for our scouts, that's a warning to you that, you know, don't learn those bad habits, that all the rest of us seem to be doing. So, I wish there was a simple answer, and we could just say, well gee, we'll spend $15,000 and the problem will go away. The likelihood is, though, that it won't. I just say that based upon the years that I've talked, going door-to-door to people, and all the complaints they have. And even on, I, I live on a street that is five houses long, and it comes around a corner, five houses long, and hits a stop sign at a busy street. And they speed on it. They can get going 35 to 40 miles an hour on that. And what can we do? It's just a real struggle. And so, if you come up with some answers, we'd be happy to talk with you afterwards. We can't do that during the meeting, and in fact, we've kind of bent the rules there a little bit to kind of let you make some comments. And the whole purpose for that, why do we not allow the interaction? Because that's where people get excited and things are said, that if it's on a public record, that people, that's a permanent record for everyone to hear forever and ever, that may not be wise. So, we visit afterwards or before, whatever, and we're, we're available to do that. Let's see.
Mayor, you may want to visit with your, the community, what's the name of that department upstairs? Not, not Economic Development, Sam's Department.
A Community Relations.
Community Relations Department on our second floor, and talk about organizing maybe a, a neighborhood group, neighborhood organization, where you can get together with your neighbors. And many times, if the residents there are aware of it, and people know they're aware of it, sometimes that slows it down too. It helps, if all the residents are watching for it, then they can also take down license numbers if necessary and report that in, and we'll follow up from there, but that may be an, an opportunity too.
Any further comments? Okay.
Mayor, like I said, I know it's out of...
Mr. Pyle?
I was just gonna say, just...
You're a member of the council, though. He doesn't vote, though, because he's not elected. But he's a member of the council.
I did ask Mr. Wilson to grab the two gentlemen, just to make sure we're updated on whatever the latest status of any new information, surveys, whatever might be appropriate.
All right. Then we'll go on with our agenda. Next, we have a resolution 16-60. This is an inter-local cooperation agreement between ourselves and Salt Lake County. They've given a grant, and this is the way we handle that, to work on a trail. It's a $50,000 grant, and to be used on 2320 South Trail Connection to the Jordan River Project. And although we could spend a lot more money on trails, they did give us this amount, so we're going to be working on that, and they'll do what they can with that. Our original application was 162,000, but we'll take what they give us and do as much as we can with it. With that introduction on that particular item, then we'll turn now to the council for any comments. And by the way, for your benefit, these are items that we studied in a previous council meeting and discussed. These aren't real significant, so if there's not much discussion, it's not that we're not interested. So, we've already had these discussions in a previous meeting, called our study meeting. To the council then.
Above approval, resolution 16-60.
Second. Motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll turn it to our city recorder to take the roll call.
Councilman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, we have resolution 16-61. This is a change order to a construction project that we have in place, $240,000. What happened was, we had a project, got it all ready, we're working on a road, and although we had done some soil tests, there was an area where apparently there was an old dumping site, and it's not very good to build a road on a dumping site of old tires and trash, so that has to be cleaned out, and it was an unexpected expense. So, we are going to do that to finish that work, so that we have a stable highway for the long term. That is the issue on this project with Whittaker Construction. They were able to, they're the ones that had the contract, and of course, expected just normal ground, and when that didn't happen, we had to work with that. So, that's the amount of money we have to add in to get this problem solved. With that then, introduction, we'll turn to the council for any comments or action.
Mayor, I would move for approval of resolution 16-61.
Second. We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll turn to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Nordfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Lang?
Yes.
Mayor Bigelow?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That completes our regular schedule of items, there's not a need for an executive session that I'm aware of. So, our work is complete. Any final comments from the council? Seeing none, then one last motion. Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming tonight.